I want to call to order the Litchfield City Council regular meeting for December 5th, 2022, and I'm going to ask Stan to say the pledge allegiance to the flag and Moon Smith, Carl Moon Smith is going to lead us in there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Lori has sent out an agenda, and we're going to try to follow that and breeze right through it tonight. It's not a long agenda. And anybody that wants to have an opportunity to speak will be given that opportunity, and we'll address the things of the agenda as we go down through here. And the first thing is the approval of the regular meeting from last meeting, November 21st, 2022. I trust that if anybody's looked over that, is there any corrections, additions, anything needs to be changed?
I make a motion.
And here is second?
Second.
I will say that Jessica and Marjorie both are not feeling well and is under the weather. Okay, Billy Dallas, we have a-
All in favor on that last vote, please. All in favor of your last vote.
Oh, that's right. All in favor? I'm sorry. Billy, what about the ratification, approval and ratification of bills? Have you had a chance?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I got visitors here. Does anybody want to speak to us? We got a new council member, Denny Patress. Denny, does he, you want to say anything to this council?
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Jenna Carnes? Nancy? You sure? We have attached to, or you've had a chance to review the approval of the October 22 financial statement, 2022. Do I hear a second and a final reading, approval of that?
I make, I second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
We had before us the last meeting was a second final reading of RZ 22, 122 rezoned property on William Thomas Byway from R1 to C1 and to reapprove, to reapprove the recommendation. Is there anything you want to say, Erlene, on that?
No, we'll take two votes on this. One to adopt and the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Board, and then the second vote will just be the vote on the ordinance itself. And that second vote will be an individual vote.
You want to take a first motion to accept the recommendation, the Planning and Zoning Board?
Yes, we'll take that first and then I'll-
Do I hear that?
I'll take it.
A second by Moon Smith? All in favor?
Aye.
And the next one is going to be what, Erlene?
I'll just need to read, and then y'all do need to do an individual vote to pass the ordinance.
Okay, we'll let you do that.
An ordinance amending and adopting an amended zoning map entitled zoning map of Litchfield, Kentucky by changing the district classification of the property located in Litchfield, Kentucky is here and after described from R1, single-family, low-density, the C-1 highway commercial. Whereas the Litchfield Planning Commission of Litchfield, Kentucky on November 14th, 2022, held a public hearing on application number RZ-22-112. The property is currently owned by Ben Hodges and is designated as property having a PVA number 093-01-00-006. Dot 0E being more described in deed book 390, page 521, records of the Grayson County Clerk's Office and being located on William Thompson Byway, 2,900 feet southwest from the intersection of Grayson Springs Road and William Thompson Byway, Litchfield, Kentucky. Request asked for a change from R1 to C1, whereas city council members conducted review of the record presented before the Litchfield Planning Commission. Recommendation is that the zoning map amendment be approved. This recommendation is attached incorporated here by reference. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City of Litchfield, Kentucky as follows. Boundaries of the district is shown on the district map entitled zoning map, Litchfield, Kentucky, being same as hereby amended for reasons adopted, all which is made a part hereof, as fully set forth where herein, including the rezoning request from Planning Commission dated 11/14/2022 to this Litchfield City Council. So the property is described as follows. Property description, refer to property description, PVA number 093-01-00-006. Dot 0E, deed book 390, page 521, records of the Grayson County Clerk's Office, and being located on William Thompson Byway approximately 2,900 feet southwest from the intersection of Grayson Springs Road and William Thompson Byway, now zone Z-1. After the adoption of this ordinance, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publications required by law, this ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict, given a second reading and duly enacted by the legislative body of Litchfield, Kentucky on the 5th day of November, or December, 2022, after first being read on the 21st day of November, 2022.
We want a motion and a second, and then do I hear a motion? Clayton, second. Moon? Moon, how do you vote on that?
Yea.
Clayton?
Yea.
All vote in for that, so that'll be adopted. Okay, Sheila Puckett, you came in a little bit late, and we done skipped the visitors. You want to be a visitor?
No.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay. We had this issue come up before. Nancy Hacks here with a realtor, and seemed like we tossed this around two or three times. And Erlene, what are we here for tonight?
In October, we had voted to deny the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Our ordinances and the KRS require that we approve a finding of facts of what action we take. We voted to deny the recommendation, however, there was not a vote taken to approve the rezoning. So what we would need to do now is take a vote on whether or not the council is going to approve the rezoning. And if that's approved, then I'll have to construct the ordinances to be read at the next meeting.
Can we simply vote to?
I'll need a vote to deny or accept, so.
If we deny, well, we had to go through the form like the Planning and Zoning did to order, to get the information on the property and stuff, be presented to the city council, and let them look over it?
We already have the finding of facts constructed, or it's already been through the Planning and Zoning Board, so.
Does council don't have to reconsider that?
Well, we presented evidence at the last hearing, or at the last, in the meeting in October. So at this point, you're either just going to have to vote yea or nay.
It's yea. Do we approve the planning zoning recommendation, or we do, we deny the planning zoning recommendation?
You'll just need, you've already denied the recommendations, but you're going to have to do a vote, and if it's a yea, it's voting to change the rezoning classification.
I see.
It's been to the planning zoning twice now, hasn't it?
It has. It has. And then it was brought before us for a hearing involving Nancy Hack presented her case. And I've constructed findings based on that hearing, so.
So we're looking for a vote to either to accept-
The rezoning or to deny.
Did we already vote before?
We voted to go against the planning and zoning recommendation.
But you didn't take a vote to accept it or-
We did not take a vote to accept that. For some reason, I was under the impression that when we went against the Planning and Zoning Board, that we would have to go through the, some of the same procedure to which they did to deny it. That we simply couldn't just out of the motion approve, make that change.
Well, at the, at the meeting in October, that's what that was used for. She presented test, basically testimony before the council of her reasons of why she was requesting the rezoning.
Okay, then I'm looking for a motion then to Clayton?
Yea.
You're looking for a motion.
Yeah, I, motion.
Clayton's making a motion. I need a second.
I'll take it.
And that is to rezone?
That's for the rezoning, yes.
Reszone, uh-huh.
And then you'll have to take an individual vote.
Okay. Moon, how do you vote on that?
I vote rezone.
Clayton?
Rezone.
We usually don't go against what the planning zoning decides. That's the thing. They're, they're put in there to decide on what's the best for this community. I vote nay.
Nay.
I tell you, I've been down here four years, and I have never recommended that we go against the Planning and Zoning Board. I think those people are there for that purpose, and I think they make their decisions and send them to the city council with more information which we have. And I love Nancy Hack. She's kin to me. I've been to her house when she was a child, and it breaks my heart. But I believe the Planning and Zoning Board is exactly what it stands for. And if we go against them and future planning zoning decisions, people that's turned down, we ended before the city council, solicit to them to overturn them. And the city council don't want this one, don't want this one, this city council to be bothered with it, our future city councils to be bothered with it. And I'm going to have to vote not to allow the change. And I hate it. I'm leaving office in two weeks, and like I said, I love Nancy. She's a personal friend, but I don't think the next council ought to be subject to people coming before them when the Planning and Zoning Board turns them down. That ought to be the final authority. And we got to act on our department heads' information. And that's the way it is with the police department. That's the way it is with public works. That's the way it is with city clerk and the fire department. And we can't take their, their recommendations. 100%, we need to replace the department heads. And I'm going to have to vote not to allow the recommendation.
That needs to be changed long time ago. What's that, Mayor?
That zoning out there? Well, like I said-
You got a body shop right out of Cromwell.
Had a body shop there.
Had a body shop.
Yeah, and there's probably-
Body market one.
Yeah, but the boys won there.
They scored.
Nancy, I'm sorry. I am. I, I wished, I loved the piece of property that I've been out there. I drove out there. I looked at it. I've simply got to take the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board.
Okay, but in my opinion, you've not explained a good enough reason to just take another commission's opinion on the reason why it was denied. I mean, I just do not understand. I really don't because I thought that being agreed that it was wanted to be.
You don't care, I'm sorry. Who cares?
Yeah, you just come up to the microphone, you want.
But anybody watching is not going to be able to hear.
I thought what we did the last time we were here was just decided that it was going to be approved and that we were doing that based on the findings of fact that were presented. So I'm just confused, so.
I had a council member call me after the last meeting, to which we did not agree with the Planning and Zoning Board, saying they wish they had not voted that way. And we run in such slickery water when, when citizen members are not getting their way, and then they appear before this body. And it would cost for every person that gets turned down to end up here. And that's the reason we got the Planning and Zoning Board.
Well, I feel like that my case was presented and not out of just selfish means. I was presenting how that it would improve the area and the community, and I still feel that way.
I do too.
I mean, it wasn't like that I was expecting special treatment at all.
I said, I've been down here four years. As far as I know, we have never against that.
Okay, that may be true, Mayor, but I mean, there's a first time for everything. I mean, that's the reason you have checks and balances, to avoid one area, pardon-
Did you plead your case to the, did you plead your case to the planning zoning?
No. No. I wasn't even aware.
We came to a planning and zoning meeting here.
I went to, I went to one, and as, as soon as, I'm just going to be frank with you, as soon as the attorney, in my view, the, it seemed to be favorable until the attorney put the brakes on. And then everybody just, I'm telling you, they just paved it. No.
I think you came down here and I told you-
I was shocked.
I'd asked you go to the planning and zoning meeting. You had not went, and that was a place for you to make that decision.
You have a planning zoning meeting, or-
Pardon?
You have a commissioner here right now.
Okay.
And I think the way it's explained to me that it went against our comprehensive plan that we voted on in the, in the spring. But then in the spring, we voted on a comprehensive plan, Erlene?
Yes, and if it doesn't meet the comprehensive plan, then one of the other two factors, let me grab. And I had prepared findings for which, for both ways, whatever you voted tonight, because it's up to the council what they want to do. I prepared findings going, whichever way you voted tonight. So, but if you don't meet the comprehensive plan, there is a way to go past that, but you have to find one of two factors, that the existing zoning classification given to the property is inappropriate, and that the proposed zoning classification is appropriate, or that there has been a major change of economic, physical, or social nature within the area involved, which was not anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan. What the planning and zoning found was that it was appropriately zoned, and they found that there was no major change in the area, is what the-
And then we're being here, and then it was agreed that you were going to override that decision, and that it was going to be rezoned. That's why I'm so confused about tonight.
Well, we sent it back to them. We sent it back to the planning zoning for them to-
We sent it back for that.
Then it was sent back here, and you denied the recommendation. But even if they deny the recommendation, there does have to be a vote of whether they decide to do the rezoning. Because here's another scenario that can happen, is they can deny the recommendation, and if it sits there, I think, is it 90 days, then 60 days, it goes to the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board. So there's a couple of different avenues that could have taken place, but in this vote tonight, they denied the rezoning request, so.
And I can, I can understand the second point that you read about the reason, because there's not been a change. So, you know, I would, I would agree to that. But the first one, would you mind rereading that, the first one?
That the existing zoning classification given to the property is inappropriate, and that the proposed zoning classification is appropriate.
And that is what I, I rest my case on, because the change that we have requested would only allow a few more scenarios to occur there as to what it's limited to now. So it's not like it's going to be a major, no, you're not going to have filling stations and businesses like that. It's not, it was just the opening up for venues of, what were some other things listed on that?
Weddings.
Barbershop, beauty shop.
Right. I mean, so-
Daycare, lasagna, or something like that, or-
Well, it's currently for daycare, for and under.
You do for and that.
Yeah, right.
But you can't, wouldn't make enough money to be-
I just don't understand. There's not, it's not a, a major request for a huge difference, but it would open up the doors for a lot more possibilities for that property.
And I look, I mean, I printed out the comprehensive plan, and under land use, provide adequate space for recreational areas and facilities, and new and existing developments, and encourage preservation of open space and green space within the city limits. Under community facilities, identify the recreational needs of city residents, and develop a strategy and program to meet those needs, ensuring the widest possible range of recreational opportunities is provided. Encourage the effective use of existing and proposed services and community facilities. Under economic development, encourage the development and prosperity of small businesses. All of that is in the comprehensive plan. And this zone change that we've requested follows along with all of that. I mean, and I thought that's what we were kind of proving the last time we were here, and that was the reason that you all decided to go, to go ahead and, you know-
And deny the recommendation.
Which would ultimately get the property rezoned. I mean, all of that's in the comprehensive plan, what we're, the change that we want to make. It doesn't go against the comprehensive plan. It supports it, in fact.
Lisa, it is Lisa, isn't it?
Amanda.
Amanda, I'm sorry. I thought Nancy called you Lisa. Do you think that voting against Nancy tonight was easy for me? It was not. But I, it's a, it's a commitment that I made to take the recommendation of the departments to which they send us to, and I've got to be firm with that. For the benefit, I've only got one more meeting. It would have been so much easier for me to vote for the change than it would to vote against it. But for the future city council members and people who would appear before the Planning and Zoning Board, they need to be made well aware that that's going to be the final authority in 99.9. Like I said, I've been here four years. We have never went against the Planning and Zoning Board that I'm aware of. And-
So you all decided to do that, but now for some reason not to. That's the part that I'm conflicted about.
Well, evidently, there's been a change of heart, because I didn't get to vote in the last one, and I wished I hadn't had to vote in this one.
Well, everyone voted no. There was one that voted against the last-
Yeah, Marjorie voted against it.
But the last, I thought that was the vote.
We voted to send it back to the planning zoning.
And you voted to?
No, we didn't vote to send it back planning zoning.
No. It didn't go back to planning and zoning.
Not that time.
You denied, you denied the recommendation not to rezone. That's what we did the last time we were here.
Wait, that a big news?
There, there was a denial of the recommendation of the planning and zoning, but there wasn't a second vote that accepted that the rezoning occurred.
And why, that's what I was wondering. Why didn't that happen the last time we were here?
It just didn't, it just didn't occur.
I think there's procedures that we have to go through.
I think there's, yeah, and this is, this is-
Denied, we just can't automatically approve it. There's procedures that have to be followed.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. And I don't, I don't, I'm not the attorney that handles the Planning and Zoning Board, and this is something that had been new in front of me. So I did a lot of research to make sure we had done everything properly. So I just, there was not a vote that actually adopted the rezoning.
So that's my question. I mean, I just don't understand what's changed between the last time we were here and tonight.
I think if you watch our meeting and watch their meeting, there's a few differences that, from their reading to our reading that was told. I think you knew that, well, I know you did. I know you saw Tyler before you voted to see what it was on, and he told you then that it was on.
Well, it was, it was, yes.
He did. But you denied it the last time we was here, because you turned around a little bit.
And I apologize, because I had forgotten, I had forgotten, and I did apologize to Tyler, because I would not intentionally misrepresent anything. That is definitely not my intention. It never has been, and I'm 69 years old, and I'm not going to start now. I can assure you of that.
She did text me later and tell me that she had forgotten about that.
Right. But keep in mind that that night, it was very stressful for me. I know that sounds like a lame excuse. And actually, I didn't even realize it until after the meeting. And I contacted Amanda, and I felt so badly about it, and I called Tyler the next morning and apologized. And if he's here, is Tyler?
He's homesick. And he's homesick tonight. He would have been here, but.
Yeah. But I mean, the thing is, I've rehashed it more times than you all, I'm sure, care to hear about. But we've got a property out there that has so much potential. It really does. And it's just a shame that it has to stay zoned residential when it cannot be a residence. It just cannot be a resident. And for the zoning change that was requested, it's only going to open it up for a few more businesses that it's not allowed now. And I just don't see, I just don't see the rationale for denying it. I truly don't. And I'm not trying to be difficult, or hard, or hard-hearted at all. But I mean, I've got a stake in that property, and not only that, I mean, the community. I mean, it could be, I've had numerous people contact me and my son about wanting to book parties and get-togethers for out, for being out there. And I said, hold on, hold on. And I really felt like that it would be fine after the first of the year. Well, that's all shot.
I had four people today want to offer you on the salad.
Well, but she's limping.
Definitely now, but you know what? It's going to limit the, the people-
The buyer for it.
The buyer for it. I mean, if they, if it can only be a church and a daycare for four people.
Nancy, I hate-
Would you want it?
What's it take to, Wes, do you know, I guess, what it takes to conform it to-
To residents?
Yeah.
I'm not real sure right now. I think as long as it's got a restroom facility, as far as like a bath or a shower, something like that.
It has two bathrooms, but no shower.
But no shower.
And no kitchen.
I don't know what's got there.
There's no laundry facility.
Does it have a kitchen?
There's no laundry.
Amanda, let me tell you this thing. We're almost at the end of the year. We're going to have a new council and a new mayor, three new council members, and a new mayor after the first of the year. And I'm not encouraging them to change their mind. I think they ought to take the recommendation plans zoning board, but being that they're new, might be a good opportunity.
Yeah, but my confusion goes back to, you know, we won this battle once, and now it's like being taken away. It's, I don't understand it. It's very confusing for me.
The thing with is, you're pleading with the council. It looks like you should have been pleading with the planning and zoning board.
We did. I came to a planning and zoning meeting, and we talked to them about it, and they denied it and told us to come to another city council meeting. Isn't that how it worked? The first meeting I came to about this was before you guys. The second meeting was planning and zoning, and then the third one was before you all again.
I think what happened is they voted to send it back, because I think Ms. Hack had said she hadn't had an opportunity to deplete her case, and so it was sent back to planning and zoning to give her an opportunity for the case to be-
That's what I would like part of that.
Yeah, that's what happened, yeah.
Nancy, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Amanda, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The following board members' terms are going to expire at the end of the year and need a replacement appointed. I ask, we got an airport board, we got a city, a city appointment on there, and it's Ben William Loyal, I think from the Falls of Rough Area, but I don't know. I don't think I've met him. But the Grayson County Board, David Zimmerley, opposed their members, and they're suggesting Charles Gordon to be, to fill this next term.
I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Now, I do need to tell you that Charles married my niece, and he runs Elite Welding. And, but he's really been active at the airport, so.
But he has his pilot license and stuff now.
Oh, yeah. He's got an airplane out there.
Just, just to make that clear, that, you know, that's the reason they-
Yeah, I talked to David.
-recommended him.
Steve Kincaid?
Hold on, Mayor, we need a-
I'm sorry.
All in favor on-
All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is Steve Kincaid. His terms expiring on the Planning and Zoning Board, and Steve has asked not to be considered for reappointment.
And a letter, a copy of his letters included.
Copy of the letters in there. Steve is one that needs to be recognized for the many service on the Planning and Zoning Board. He's been here since inception, and him and Kendall and some others have really made a, have really been good on the Planning and Zoning Board. Steve's moved out of town. He's an out-of-town member, and we can only have two. And Wes Whitmore is the other one. And I'm going to ask the city council to approve Tony Swift to replace Steve Kincaid.
I'll make a motion.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. And Moon, you're in favor?
I agree.
Okay. April Bowman, who's recently appointed, appointed, and this would give her a full term. April's going to be a real contribution to the Planning and Zoning Board. She's worked for Watkins and Buckles, and goes through planning and zoning boards all over the state. And I would like to hear a motion to appoint her to a full term.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
April's, April's good. And a council member-elect mayor, Denny Patress is here, and Denny's terms, he had offered to resign some weeks ago, and I said, Denny, we're near, getting near your term anyway, and we'll just let him make- anyway, and we'll just let him make a resignation December thirty-one before he becomes city council member, and we'll let Mayor Miller and the new council appoint his replacement." And it has to be a city resident. Yes, sir?
Good, Mayor, I do have to resign before the end of the year, so it'll be after the next planning and zoning meeting.
Well, December thirty-first is before the end of the year.
Yeah, but I have to, it's Monday before December third, so I guess it may be...
Yeah.
We can, we can swear in...
Okay.
The first or the second, but I know you want to...
And I said, I had somebody in mind, but after I talked to them, they got cold feet, and it'd be a good, a good appointment for the new council and the new mayor to make.
I have his interest taken, it's a big one.
Yeah, well, that, I would get him to the Herald and, and said, it's, he's a city resident, so it'd be a city appointment. Okay, Wes Shaw, we're into garbage cans.
Hopefully, we'll be distributing the first of February.
Okay, good.
Fingers crossed.
Any other business from the public works? Thank you for the breakfast that we had last week, we always enjoy that. David Riley?
Yeah, I got something about the cruisers. Normally, this time of year, we like preorder our cruisers from Freedom Dodge, they like for us to get our name in the pot and everything. This year, it's a little bit different. They asked me and said Dodge was requiring it for a purchase order number, and I asked the salesman if they could send us some kind of letter that would not hold us to that, because I would have to get that approved by the budget committee and by the city council later in the fiscal year. So, he said he couldn't do nothing with that, okay? So, I guess what I'm asking for is, do you all have any recommendations of what we could do? Because normally, what they will do, it, it's word of mouth, and it's been that way for years, if we order five and the, the budget committee only approved three, Dodge was good, or Freedom Dodge was good with that, because they said, "We can always sell," because there's a shortage of the Dodge chargers. So, I guess what I'm asking for is maybe from the council is maybe suggestions? I, I don't want us, you know, I don't want us to end up not being able to do the five cruisers and us be locked into something because we give a P.O. number.
So, he's wanting something now?
He is, he is wanting, he...
Does that lock the price in now?
It, it does, it does, it does, but I, you know, I don't know if Erlene maybe could draft something to them and let them sign that, understanding that if it's not approved by the budget committee, then we can't buy them, you know?
When was the last time you got five?
Uh, it was two years ago, a year, yeah. It was prior to this last fiscal year.
Has that worked out well?
It has, fantastic. Actually, actually, what I'm, what I'm wanting to do is, right now, we have, in twenty-fourteen, we have six cruisers that are currently in service. We have a two thousand eight, which I didn't get rid of, because actually, we didn't have the spare cars, and then we have a twenty thirteen Chevy that we're using as a spare. And what I'd like to do is thin some of them out and, you know, try to upgrade our fleet just a little bit more.
Were you selling some of your fourteens?
Did I or can't, would I? Yes, I would, yes, I would.
You got five names?
Yes, I would, because we're in, and we're in a position now that we could do that.
Well, we tried to stay ahead of them, you know?
We do, and we...
We tried to stay ahead of them, we bought five.
We, we do, and I'll be honest with you, it's, some of these are starting to give us a little trouble, you know, you're talking sixty, seventy, eighty, someone's got a hundred thousand miles on them, and, you know, they're...
A hundred thousand, I heard.
That's it, they're, I mean, they're eight years old, and the idling time is, is phenomenal. So, I guess, I guess what I'm, I'm asking is how can we, has anybody got any idea of how we can protect the city, or what we could do to protect the city in case they try to lock us in because we give them a P.O. number? I mean, I don't know...
Sabrina and I did not feel comfortable signing a P.O., because it's not been approved, it's not in a budget, so that's why we've asked David to bring it to you all.
It, it's...
I mean, if you all tell us we're, you're good with that, then, you know, we're good with giving them a P.O., but, I mean, legally...
And I can draft something for, like, the manager to sign, saying that we're...
Do they give a P.O. each, or...
N- no, they just want a blanket P.O. number.
They want, they want a P.O. that says that we're gonna get, that we're, we're purchasing five cruisers.
I asked the salesman why the change, and he said, "Just to be honest, Dodge was upset with some dealerships because of what they was doing, they was adding cruisers to police department P.O.s and buying additional cruisers and using them as stock, using them as stock cruisers, and Dodge said, 'We don't have enough production and enough people to do stock, we just need to fill our orders.'" So, that's what the salesman told me.
Are you satisfied with that?
Am I? I, I am, I am, you know, the newer ones, we're not, you know, I mean, they're taking care of us if we have any problems. I mean, you know, someone with eight years, I mean, we're starting to have a few issues.
How are your trucks working now?
They're fantastic, we're not having any problems with trucks whatsoever. You know, and I asked him, I mean, he's given me a price on trucks, on the Durango and also on the Charger, the V-six Charger. I mean, the V-eight Charger's kinda impractical for us, really, if we get snow, they're dead in the water, you know, I mean, ice or anything, they just, they won't go. So, I, I'm just looking, I'm just looking for an opinion and some help, to be honest with you, because I, you know, the salesman assured me, he goes, "David, he goes, 'If we don't, if you don't take all of those chargers, it's gonna be like it always is, we're not gonna worry about it.'" But that's word of mouth, and I mean, I don't know, that could change, and I just think we ought to be protected a little bit more.
If we could get Erlene to draft something and force them to sign what they said to you.
I'll draft something, and if he gets me the contact information, I can send it. So, we can just kinda table this till the next meeting, see if I can get a response.
The council has always, I mean, and, and the budget committees has always approved the number, I mean, there's never been a question, and we've never had any kind of issue, but I just wanna make sure that, I, I mean, I've racked my brain trying to figure out exactly what we could do to cover the city, where, you know, come August or whatever, when we wanna take delivery, that, you know, if the budget committee says three, I tell him three, and he goes, "Oh, no, you give us a P.O. for five."
Are any of them out of alcohol, David?
Uh, parts of it.
Yeah, parts of it is.
Parts of it.
Boy, surely you can get a car for them.
Well, that's, it's, it's iffy there. Right now, we can use about fifteen percent.
Yeah, just percentage.
They highly recommend you not purchase one, totally without alcohol.
Is that fifteen percent, not counting your bookkeeping fee that you get to? Do what you... Is your bookkeeping fee, or isn't it like twenty percent?
Everything we do right now for alcohol is eighty-five fifteen, and that more than covers what we bring in.
Is that the number, I mean, is that the number you have to go by?
I think Sabrina and David did a lot of research and sat down and looked at all the laws, and they, that's the number they felt comfortable with.
I thought when we first got that, it was like seventy-five, twenty-five, when we first went into effect with...
I don't know, Sabrina done a bunch of research with the other departments and stuff, I think, and talked with other clerks.
It's tricky, Billy, that.
Yeah, all that, everything delivered during the...
Other clerks and stuff, and I think, I think seventy, or eighty-five fifteen was what they, people was using.
Yeah, and I think she's...
So, how about fifteen percent, you get an officer?
Well, now, like, the ones that are at the schools, we can totally charge the A.B.C. because they're supposed to be doing alcohol, you know, they're supposed to be doing classes or training.
So, you got two, you got two of them, boys, is it?
That's our own, yes.
Then, even if they go above the fifteen percent?
Right, they, I, I think Seth and...
Seth and...
Chase are one hundred percent, aren't they?
Yeah, they're one hundred percent.
So, they don't count a issue under fifteen percent?
They...
And the schools pay so much of their salaries as well.
Yeah, the school pays so much of it.
We just have to have facts that say this is, this is what they're doing, and this is why we can back up, that we can charge a hundred percent of that too.
What, what is the split now with us and the school board on that?
Uh, I don't have the contract here, but I think, for some reason, Billy, I think that the, the school board's paying like thirty...
I think thirty-six is standing at nine.
Thirty-six thousand on the salaries.
When they do the salary, we do the health insurance and benefits.
Yeah, we do the benefits.
We do the benefit.
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna think about your car, David, I could just...
Well, I just...
I think you just need to work it out and bring it back to the next meeting, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna participate to make sure you got those cars, and I said, let Erlene research that.
I'll, I'll see what I can send Naomi to see if she'll sign something.
Can you word it, where you taking anything from one to five cars?
I mean, I, I would say so, I mean...
You just might have trouble getting them.
I might have, you know, I, I may, which, which, I mean, if we get one, we get one, that's, that's better than none, I mean, we're making headway, but I, I, I don't, I don't know what they would do to us on that. I, I mean, Freedom Dodge, of course, that's state contract, so we're, we're sort of locked in with them, and, you know, we're a little bit at their mercy, you know? I've talked to John Jones, and they can't, they, they're about twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars above, you know, on, on, on the, no, on the same, on the same dodging, same dodging.
I can't see that.
I find it hard to believe that any city's gonna sign a P.O. vehicles in a fiscal year that's not even, the budget's not even been planned for.
Yeah.
And I told him, I said, you're, I said, I, you know, I, I said, "I'm gonna be honest with you," I said, "I'm not sure they're gonna allow me to do this, and I'm not sure I really feel comfortable doing it."
Well, surely, he's joining into it with other departments.
I'm, I'm sure he has, sure.
So, there's some resolution to it.
Okay.
I said, "Let's work on that and come, bring it back to the next meeting." Anything else, David?
Uh, no, sir, I'm done, thank you.
Lori?
Um, we, today was the last day for resumes for the accounts receivable position, we got upwards of twenty-five, and we picked out seven, and probably four of those denied it because of pay, so we're, we've got, I think, three that we're gonna interview, one Thursday and two Friday, so hopefully, hopefully we'll...
We'll find somebody.
We'll find somebody, if not, we'll be back to the drawing board.
Yeah. The last accounts payable, Mandy seems to be an excellent employee.
Amanda's worked out awesome, yes.
I think you may have to adjust the pace a little bit.
Well, and that's what we've told them, our starting, what our starting pay is, and then that goes up, you know, we'll take in all, all their experience that they've got, and we can raise it from there, but, you know, most people, I mean, some of them's making seventeen dollars, up to twenty-three dollars a year, I mean, we can't compete with that.
The one that I checked on, everybody's more than one per person.
Yeah, 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 I mean, we just can't compete with that.
Anything else, Lori?
Nope, that's all I have.
Erlene, did you have anything important?
No.
Tammy Sossman?
No, I haven't, thank you.
Uh, let me see, I wanna talk to you a minute about the pay scale for the mayor. I went to Morgantown three years ago, and at that time, the mayor's salary was thirty thousand dollars a year, and Morgantown's mayor with twenty-two hundred peoples was thirty-seven thousand, and we can't raise our own pay, but we can raise the pay of the next mayor's. And I'm gonna suggest to this council that we consider a five thousand dollar a year raise for the next mayor and make it effective July the first, for that can be budgeted for the next fiscal year. And it, it's embarrassing to say that we're not paying what Morgantown pays, and that's just something to consider, and I'll give you two weeks to think about it. Also, the code enforcement people, we put those on the board at fifty dollars a meeting, and that's not enough either. In hindsight, and seeing how much work they've done, how much they've done in the community, to which I'm very pleased with, it ought to be at a very minimum, they meet four times a year, it ought to be a minimum of a hundred dollars a meeting, and I wish you'd think about that as well. The next meeting will be the final meeting for three of our council people and myself, so Lori's gonna have us a little cake and ice cream, invite your families to come, and taking that. The city dinner, the city workers will be Friday, December the ninth, Lori's got her own thing, the chamber lunch will be December the eighth, let Lori know, and Moon Smith, we're down to you, you got anything important to say?
I'm good.
You sure?
Sure.
Clayton Miller?
No, sir.
You sure?
Pardon.
Tudy Kotra?
Only thing I got to say, they put up a light pole today.
Did they really?
Yes, they did.
Well...
I don't have a light on it, but I got a phone.
That's a start. Maybe the next council had to prove the light bulb. We got the pole, surely they can get the bulb.
That's right.
But now, all, all the W.R.C.C. lights in the city of Litchfield will be upgraded. We approved that in the last budget, and a lot of our W.R.C.C. lights are embarrassing. They're, you assume not have nothing as to have what we got, and we budgeted for those, and they've been ordered and that. You got anything else, Tudy?
No, thank you.
Billy Dallas?
I just wanna thank Moon, and I was gonna thank the other two for coming and caring for the community to get the light, and sometimes you don't like it, it's a big deal and make people mad and hurt feelings, and, but I appreciate you, Moon, and also your fifty-five, fifty-five years for the fire department in this community.
Amen.
That, that can never be upheld. Good job for you, and thank you for coming and meeting with us.
I'm hoping to recognize Moon and maybe others. Moon has not only been on the city council, he's been on the utilities, he's been our fire chief, and Moon has done, there's probably nobody in the city that's done as many jobs and stuff as Moon has, and I was gonna kinda wait till the next meeting, maybe we'll get, maybe we'll let you cut the cake and get the first piece of cake out. Now, how would that be?
I cut the ribbon on the new city office.
See? Well, that, that's it. Moon, Moon has served us well, as well as other people has, and don't go over crazy for Moon, we'll wait till next meeting, we'll say a lot of lavish things that makes him look good, and you bring Debbie and...
You might be sick, you might want to relax.